Good evening and welcome to the April 27, 2021, meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. With me here tonight, I have Alan Sturgis, Courtney Frecher, Jim Salvi, and Megan Birch-McMichael, as well as our executive assistant, Joyce Sampson, who's filling in for our town administrator Denise, who is on a lovely vacation. First up, public input. If anybody has some public input, please raise your virtual hand and be recognized. Surprised I don't have anything from Linda. Well, I'll take over for that.
She's there.
Please, anybody who hasn't voted by mail yet, please get, start getting your ballots in. And don't forget the town election on May 8. Hearing no public input, I will move on. And as far as chairman's comments, I'll be brief tonight. Spring is coming. We seem to be starting to crawl out of this COVID mess slowly but surely. It appears from the state data that at least 55% of the people in Stowe have already received their first vaccination, which is all good. I encourage people to go out, get it done as soon as possible. There's more and more available on a regular basis, including a recent partnership with, I believe, Marlboro Hospital that our town administrator set up. So you can contact the Selectmen's office if you needed information on that. Other than that, please keep wearing your masks and stay healthy. Next up, we have two appointments. Very fine folks. Chief Solisi.
Yeah, good evening.
Why don't you tell us what you're up to here? And probably describe the process that you've gone through.
Okay, well, and I think Brandon Murphy is trying to log in, but I don't, he's just texting me now saying he's trying to connect and it's not letting him connect. So I don't know if he's still in the waiting room or not. So thank you very much. I would like to say that, starting back in December of last year, we had a resignation from one of our patrol officers. Jacob McResign to further his career in another community, returning to his hometown. And then in 2000, and then in January, I was promoted. So that gave us the opportunity for two openings within our department. And so what's been going on for the past few months is that this has really caused our department to have personnel shortages and caused an increase in open shifts, increase in overtime, increased distress on those officers covering their shifts, as well as their two open shifts that, I'm sorry, the two positions that they also have to cover. So there's been a lot of work that's been going along here at the police department. So as I presented back in 2000, I'm sorry, March 9th, evening, oh, there he is. We started out posting for our opening, open position. And we had a really good turnout. So we had about 42 individuals send us resumes and cover letters. Those, we asked everybody to send us a blind cover letter and a blind resume. So what we, what I ended up doing was I was able to take the the information that had no personal information on it and send that to our hiring advisory board that I was able to put together. And that was actually made up of three staff members, dispatcher Detective Scott, and Lieutenant Rain, and also two residents. One was Anna Celestia Carr, and she's a member, a resident, a member of our Neshova Area Social Justice Alliance, as well as James Lamb, who's a resident of the over 35 community in town here. They were able to come together and really go through all the resumes that we were received. We put it out to many different avenues that we were able to, to broadcast that posting to. You know, it was on the normal posting of our social media sites, but as well as Indeed. And it was pushed out to colleges around the community. We had a lot of views of that. And like I stated, we had 42 resumes come in, which is really, really good because we only usually get between five and 10. So this really expanded what we have. And then we divided the, we divided it into two tracks. Those individuals that were academy trained and those that were not academy trained. So out of those, there was 14 academy trained individuals and 28 non-academy trained. Out of the 14 that applied, there was four that were eliminated based on some of the information that was provided to the hiring board. Some were past, some were past applicants that we, that they were recognized. And there was, we knew right away that we wouldn't be able to hire them for reasons that they left other police departments. So we, we knew that right away. And then we had the 28 non-academy trained. So what do we have to do with those? We have to make sure that they think they could go to the academy. So we offered all of them to take the physical agility tests that you need to get into the academy. So we sent 28 invites out. I had three volunteer members from my department that set up Neshova, the PAT test over in Neshova Regional High School. They were great at helping us facilitate that. And we sent out 28 invites and 13 people showed up and 12 people passed that. Some of the reasons why the people didn't show, because every step of the way, even though the hiring committee didn't know who the people were, I did. I always reached out to try to say, how can we do this better? Why didn't you show up? What can we have done to help you get to that test? Or what can we have helped you to go through this process? Some of the reasons were other police departments, there were other police tests at the same time. Some people were forced to stay at work. One individual hurt himself, was injured right before the PAT test. And one person just does, said that he got, forgot about it. So out of those, we sent out, we have the big packets now, what we call them, the application packets. It's a 26-page application process. And so we sent that out to all the remaining 22 candidates. 17 people returned the packets. For those that didn't, we found that they took a job in another community. They found that coming down for the PAT test, that the commute to Stowe would have been too, too far from home. Some decided to stay with the current department that they were already with. And the other ones I checked in with and they never returned a message. So for hours, the advisory committee, they ended up reviewing these application packets, going through them. And they offered 11 interviews, four academy trained, seven non-academy trained. And out of those seven, I'm sorry, out of those 11, they ended up going into an interview that was approximately an hour long, 57 questions. And they recommended, that individual board recommended three to the town administrator, three academy trained and three non-academy trained. Town administrator and myself, we reviewed those and we interviewed four. We interviewed them for approximately 30, 30, 20, 30 minutes, I'm sorry, 20, 30 questions, about 45 minutes. And then we have two, I have two great appointments that I'd like to recommend. Currently, Brandon Murphy is a, one of our dispatchers. He's been with us since 2016. He's been a reserve officer with us from 2017. He currently is very knowledgeable about the town of Stowe and our department policies, protocols, procedures. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and he's been through the Reserve Academy. What would happen with him is if he is appointed today, he will, we will actually be posting for a dispatch position and to replace him as a dispatcher. And the other individual is Jacob Champeau. He's a, currently works as a correctional officer. And he is a military police officer for the Army National Guard. And he was able, just to recently finish the Police Academy by being sponsored by the Army National Guard. He's very, his knowledge of Stowe is limited, as the town administrator put in her report. But it is, he's very likable and he's, he was very open and honest during his interview. And I think he's going to be a very good fit for our department and our community. And he has that right attitude that we are looking for here in Stowe. If, what we're looking for is that Brandon would be appointed first. If, pending the final approval of town administrator, that they actually, both of them would need to complete successfully physical and mental exams and as well as a pending background check. Once this happens and everything is good, becomes back positive, we would put Jacob right in, right on the road. He'd go through some field training. And as soon as the dispatcher was hired, Mr. Murphy would be able to go on the road. And as soon as a full-time Police Academy came available, that we'd be able to send him to that academy. But he'd be able to work prior to being able to go to that academy as I would be obtaining a waiver for him for up to 270 days. Those are the two individuals. I think we had a fair and open process. I did try to check in a lot of times with the individuals who did not complete the process or took off, you know, early. You know, I was going through our numbers and, you know, out of the 42, I know that some individuals were looking to see how many women did apply. We did have seven. And I went through and talked to, only one didn't call me back during the process. One had a prior commitment and couldn't make the PAT. Another one was, individual was quarantined for COVID. We actually had an interview. And the results of those, that interview will be reviewed with her, with our hiring board to further her experience being interviewed. Again, two, an individual took a job somewhere else. And there was another, how a police test going on. So, and then another individual stayed with her community that she's a police officer in now. So that's where we're at. And I, as I stated before, I recommend, you know, these two individuals, Brandon and Jake, for appointment tonight. And they're online, so you can ask them any question you guys would like to.
All right.
And that was a lot of talking for me.
Thanks, chief. Brandon, if you're there, why don't you kind of zoom in? And you can say a few words and we'll see if any members of the board have any questions for you.
Sure, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So like Chief said, I'm Brandon Murphy. I've worked for the Stowe Police Department for, by record, five years. I've really enjoyed my time there, just creating relationships with my coworkers and other, members of other departments. And I've really enjoyed serving the people of Stowe. And I'm, I'm just excited by the opportunity to get out on the road and serve the community on that side.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions, comments from members? Brandon, I, I think I've already appointed you more than once. And I think I was, I think I was on the group that ended up interviewing you quite a while ago, too. And you've worked out well. I've only heard good things about you. And for the last 10 weeks or so, I've actually seen you a few times when I've been at the Police Academy. So thank you for stepping forward and I'm very happy to see you progressing in your career.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please, Mr. Salvi.
May I make one comment before I do a motion?
Sure.
One minor concern I had when we enacted our more thorough and less subjective process was I was a little bit concerned it might take long, a long time. And I see here that from job posting to appointment was 50 days, 5-0, out of a month and a half, which I don't think is any longer than the old process. So just, I find that very interesting. Chief Solisi, if you can keep that up, that would be great.
And I'd like, I'd like to say, Jim, that it was our, our volunteers from the community that really was able to help us push this through as quick as they did. Because they came in for many hours and met as a group. And they dedicated their time and put the effort in, not only as a group, but individually going through on their own personal time at home, reviewing everything that came in. So I really, I can't take credit for that. I have to give it to that, that group of individuals. So thank you. But I will keep that up, we'll keep that process going.
Kudos to them. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I move to appoint Brandon Murphy to the position of full-time patrol officer for the Stowe Police Department for a one-year probationary period from the effective date of hire, pending final approval by the town administrator that the prerequisite physical and mental health exams have been satisfactorily completed. Additionally, I move that Mr. Murphy's official start date as a patrol officer be dependent upon hiring a dispatch replacement and his status at a bridge or full-time, full-time academy.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Welcome aboard in a different capacity.
Thank you very much.
All right. And do we have, Jacob, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hello, Jacob.
Hi, good evening. Hi, it's really nice to see you guys. I wish this could be in person. As the chairman was saying, I'm really looking forward to COVID being over, meeting everybody in person, working with you guys in the community as well. 25 years old. I've been a corrections officer for the last two and a half years. I've also been in the National Guard for seven and a half years. I just finished the, as the chief was saying, the National Guard sponsored me to go through the State Police Academy. It was for municipal police officers. It was one of the first academies ever like that being designed. And I look really forward to working in the community with you guys.
Questions or comments?
I can't help, I, Jake, I love your style. Like the purple shirt, like the purple tie. You know, maybe the chief will get some, you know, we're going to dress it up a bit here.
Personal, I.
Not all of us could pull that off.
No.
I certainly could.
Thank you.
That's great.
I will entertain a motion then.
Before I make a motion, Jacob, can you help me on the pronunciation of your name, of your last name?
Yes, it is Champeau.
Champeau, thank you. I move to appoint Jacob Champeau to the position of full-time patrol officer for the Stowe Police Department for a one-year probationary period from the effective date of hire, pending final approval by the town administrator that the prerequisite physical and mental health exams have been satisfactorily completed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Jacob, congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate you guys' time, and I look forward to it as well.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And can I just add a?
Congratulations, thank you.
I just want to add to, Chief Solisi, I'm really grateful for how transparent you just made this whole process. You know, for people who are, might not have known what it takes. And even for those who might have, you just walked us through the whole thing and that was really helpful. I really appreciate that.
Well, you're welcome. And like I said, I'm thankful for the volunteers that we had. And I thank you to the board for tonight. I really appreciate your support because I know that these individuals will be able to really be part of our community and really make a difference. And I'm looking forward to working with them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. We have a public hearing coming up in about 12 minutes. I think.
There's always minutes.
You can always start with minutes? Or do you think you can do your perambulation, report in 10, 10 minutes?
Sure, sure. Yeah, why not?
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm gonna, I wanted to, let's see if I can do this. And I have to see if I can manage sharing a screen just to make it, make a little more sense. Okay. So I did include a memo in the packet, but I wanted to give an update of our perambulation that started last fall and is nearly complete. So just to review for people particularly listening, this is actually a regulation of master in law that we are required to look at our borders every five years. And I will say, Stowe is far more attentive to this regulation than almost any of our neighboring towns, based on the non-painted monuments we've been seeing. But, and I, and I won't go any farther without Greg Troxel is on the phone. I just want to recognize him as our most consistent volunteer for at least, I think we figured at least 15 years, if not longer. He has been on three or four of these rounds of perambulation. And honestly, I certainly couldn't have been doing this without him. He's the keeper of data. He remembers where the monuments are when they're hard to find. And he also has the technology that is tracking it as accurately as we can. So just a public thank you to Greg again for, for being part of this process. And he in turn wanted to thank Ross Perry, who had also done a really good job of documentation about 15 years ago, or maybe it was 10 years ago. So, so if you can see the map, this, the, the thing, you don't really see that much, except for there's a bunch of dots on here. And these are the places we've actually visited to date. There's roughly 12 corner boundary markers and somewhere between 17 and 19 road bounds. We have visited all of the corners at this point. We finished that a couple of weeks ago. And we have about six or seven, I think, road bounds left to do, which we hope to do in the next week or two. I just wanted to talk primarily about the corners. Those, of course, are most important because those really are the, you know, the real key points to define the boundaries of Stowe. One of the things that doesn't seem to happen every year or every five years is we talk about what's the next step. And there's a few, right now, there's three sort of potentially problematic corners that we might want to address, one of which I think we have to move on. There's one that's actually flown, has fallen into the river. Whether that's really critical or not, we can see it. It won't be there for much longer if the river keeps rising. There's one at the Delaney Project in the middle of the, one of the massive fields that's about three inches above the ground. And I'm not sure whether it's realistic to build a bigger monument or replace a bigger monument there because of where it sits. But the one we're concerned about is it, on a corner of Barton Road between Hudson and Stowe, which I think it's the, it's the, well, I don't know if you can see it. It's at the bottom of your screen in a slightly brighter purple triangle or diamond. When we visited there, the neighbor came out, the Stowe neighbor, whose name I don't have handy, but he was quite aware of the history, which was that a former neighbor on the Hudson side had actually removed a number of the, the boundaries because they were trying to do a bit of a land grab into Stowe. Interesting. Now, that could all be folklore and we don't know. But the reality is there is no marker there. And it seems like a critical piece because it basically goes into, into Lake Boone at that point. So that's the one where we would suggest we, and I think there's a motion in the packet, to, to contact the Hudson Board of Selectmen to say, you know, we, we think we should come up with a solution here, which would require a surveyor, an estimate of the cost to replace it, and then propose a cost-sharing agreement on making a marker that would be a flat stone in the middle of the road. Because literally, it's in the middle of the road. So, so that's sort of where we're at. I would just say, you know, just totally is, it's a fun thing to do. We've had a number of people come for one or different days as we searched through the woods for, for the different stones. And it's, you know, and hearing the history of some of them, Greg knows a lot of the history. The history of perambulation is fascinating if you want to go look up. But we are in the process of finishing our final report that'll have pictures and more data on it. So, so, Mr. Chair, that's, that's the, that's my quick report. And was, I, was there a motion? I don't know.
There is no motion.
So, I mean, I guess, I don't know if we need to, to have a specific vote. But I think, I, and I can talk to Denise when she gets back about writing the Board of Selectmen.
Well, one of the things might be, that might, you know, she could obviously contact them and let them know, you know, we probably should do it. But what I would say too is maybe finish everything to make sure that there aren't some other issues in there, too, that need to be addressed, and maybe try to address them all at once.
Well, the, the other ones, I mean, the, the ones, the other ones, well, the one in the river is, um, that's actually also a Hudson border, but a little more complicated. I think the, the one, because of what we've seen so far, this is the most critical. Because it's, it really, it's a corner. It's, and it's, it's clearly totally 100% missing. There's another one on Walcott Street that's also missing, but it's a boundary, not a corner. So.
11 years ago, we contacted DCR about the one at Delaney.
Oh, uh-huh.
Because we needed their permission to go in there and rebuild it, even start to think about rebuilding it. And they never got back, they, they got back to us and said, we'll get back to you. They were undergoing some sort of management challenge back then, and then it fell off the radar.
That's interesting.
And that's been an issue since then. I agree with you. I mean, the whole point of having town bounds is to prevent one town from doing a land grab with the other. So do you want a motion? Or do you just want to talk to Denise and then do something more comprehensive? What are we doing?
I mean, I had talked to Denise about it and she was comfortable with, with doing a, a motion to, just for this first step of reaching the Hudson.
I can freestyle it if you want.
Yeah.
I move that we direct the town administrator to contact the Hudson Town Government to begin conversations about redelineating the town bound at Barton Road, at the Barton Road Boundary.
Second. Do you want to include the other, you said there was another Hudson one?
Walcott Street.
No, because this is really the only, the corner is really, I, I think the other ones aren't nearly as critical.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll say, thank you for taking this on, Alan.
Totally fun. I'm ready to be done, but it's totally fun.
I, I had all good intentions of getting out there and doing some of it, but I didn't. And so I'm kind of bummed, but thank you.
We still might have one more day out there, so I'll let you know.
All right. Do you want to do a few minutes? Let's, let's do a couple of minutes. Couple of minutes. All right. Let's start off with the minutes of April 13, 2021. Any comments or corrections to be seen?
We seem to have a excellent new minute ticker.
I was gonna say.
No.
I was gonna say, Joyce, you're doing a bang-up job. So if nobody has any additions to that, I will accept a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of April, of April 13, 2021 minutes as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
April 13, executive session minutes. This was the meeting where we were discussing with Denise about her contract. And I think this is, I was okay with it. And I think we, the motion should also read to release it. I think we can at this point.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of April 13, 2021, and to release them to the public.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive session minutes of July 28, 2020. This one, Jim Court, oh, we were all there. We're all there.
We're all there.
Oh, yes. This was a very brief meeting, just to update us on the various issues. So I don't see anything in here that would preclude us from approving it and releasing it.
I don't think we, anything related to litigation that's still pending, I don't think we should. And I know some of this is still pending.
But there's.
I know.
All right, so.
Well.
Approve the minutes.
That's just my, that's just my two cents. I, I wouldn't.
I have a question. I mean, the way we're reading it, it, it actually doesn't even state what the litigation is. Wouldn't executive session actually say the specific?
Yeah, I, I had that same question.
I think it's a little too vague. You remember that, but, but, you know, if we released it, it wouldn't really give any information out because it doesn't.
Okay, okay.
Well, no, I'm, I'm sort of wondering, is that, is that enough for?
For an executive session?
For minutes?
I think what you're saying, and you're right, is if we release it to the public, there's no harm. Because this isn't going to do anybody any good in litigation. And I think you're right. The defense lawyer in me is saying, never do anything you don't have to do because you don't know that somebody else might look at it and somehow, in some way, that you don't know, it is useful. You're being less paranoid than I am.
Well, no, my, no, my question is, is that it? Well, no, my, no, my question is, is that it doesn't say, it's executive session minutes, and yet the way it's written, it didn't matter if that's executive session or not because it doesn't say anything about what the topic of current litigation is.
Okay.
So that's my concern, is that, is this really a useful minutes?
Those minutes might not even be ready to be released yet because we were talking about pending litigation.
So there are no notes of this, is, is the problem. We, we can't be more specific about what was said.
Oh, okay.
Well, then I guess.
This is the best that Joyce can do.
Okay, all right.
Now I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So your suggestion is?
We wait.
Just out of paranoia, I admit it.
Paranoia is good.
You're probably right. What was that?
Paranoia is good.
Yeah, sometimes. And, and I mean, we will when all this litigation is, is over.
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the executive session meeting minutes of July 28th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And these are not released.
That includes the minutes that we have for the minutes for now.
All right. So, I'll get back. All right. So the, next up, we have a public hearing relating to Hallock Point. I'm going to start off by reading the notice that was placed in the paper. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 61, Section 8, the Stowe Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing via Zoom webconferencing Tuesday, April 27th, 2021, at 7:30 to consider exercise of the town's Chapter 61 right of first refusal for 12.6 acres of land at Sudbury Road and Hallock Point Road, owned by Robert Dawes LLC and shown on the Stowe map, Stowe assessor's maps as map U6, partial 9B, and 13A. Notice of withdrawal of this land from Chapter 61 was given to the town of Stowe on June 5th, 2020. And the time period for the town's consideration of this matter has been extended during the state of emergency by Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. Call and instructions will be posted on the agenda in the website. I would entertain a motion to convene the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene the public hearing on the Chapter 61A right of first refusal for property at Hallock Point Road.
Second.
All in favor? And this will be a roll call vote. Megan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Ellen?
Yep.
And Chair votes aye. So we are, the public hearing is now open. One of the things is, is I'd like to just set a couple of ground rules for this public hearing. We're going to be having a couple of presentations. The presenters will have the time that they need to make presentations. I'll be starting off with them. And after the presenters have given their presentations, we'll entertain public input on this. And what I'd like people to do is try to limit it to less than two minutes per person, as well as, I'm hoping that, that, have people wait before making a second comment until everybody else has made comments. And please try not to be repetitious. All right?
Did I identify any public comment, identify themselves?
Yes. When you do ask to speak, I, I would ask that you provide your name and your address for the record. Thank you for it. The, I'm going to start off by seeing if the Board of Selectmen here have any comments or to begin with on this. Or if, other than that, we'll just go on to the, probably the Concom, and then the Lake Boone Association for their input.
I'll wait for the presentation.
Yeah.
So, in that case, what I'll do is I'll turn this over to the Concom, and you can explain what, what you're doing. And Kathy, I suppose, you're going to be the lead on this.
Great. Thank you, Tom, and members of the board. Good evening. I'm Kathy Sparrow. I'm the Conservation Director for the Town of Stowe, working for the Stowe Conservation Commission. And with me tonight to join in making the presentation are Dan Barstow from the Lake Boone Commission and Dave Gray from the Lake Boone Association. We also have here tonight representatives of some of the other organizations that have been involved in this effort, as well as a number of interested citizens that have been participating in the fundraising campaign. I have just a few slides that I'd like to show tonight. And we will try to be brief. And you, the board also has a detailed memo from me with an update on the status of the project. So I'm going to share my screen. And, let's see. Here we go. So just to start off, really for the public and others by way of orientation, Hallock Point is a peninsula of land located between the third and fourth basins of Lake Boone. The land that has been offered to the town through the right of first refusal process is shown here in green, totaling approximately 12 acres, which if not acquired by the town, is proposed for subdivision into seven single-family house lots, and then an eighth lot that would be open space. As was indicated earlier, the town has officially received a notice of the withdrawal of the land from chapter that was given in June of 2020. That 120-day time clock that we're usually operating under has been extended by an act of the legislature. So technically, a reading of the law is that that 120 days hasn't started yet. I want to start off by thanking the landowner and their representatives, who I know are here tonight. This has been, I think, a longer process than anybody ever imagined that it would be. And we are very appreciative for everyone's patience as we've worked through this and really tried to bring it to the first town meeting that we've had since we were able to schedule it. So I think it's fair to say that we're all eager to bring this to conclusion. We do have this scheduled to be voted on at a town meeting on the 22nd, assuming your affirmative vote tonight. From the outset, we really set off to put together a financial plan for this project that would offer the town an affordable way to protect the most important parts of the land and in a manner that would be financially workable. We really wanted to respect the other demands that are currently being placed on the town's community preservation fund. And so the project really has three elements that make up the financial package that will make this happen. The first was a request for $400,000 in community preservation funds. We have received support of the Community Preservation Committee and their unanimous vote to support that at town meeting. The second piece of this was to raise at least $500,000 through the sale of two reconfigured lots on Sudbury Road. The lots are being reconfigured so that the town can own the shoreline along most of those lots, and to provide for sort of a continuous trail network through and around those lots. The surveys showing those lots is currently in progress, in process. And we have an RFP out through the 30B process for the disposition of the lots because the town will own them for a brief moment in time. Those bids are due back on May 11th. And then the third element of the project is to raise approximately $150,000 for the Hallock Point project, and then an additional $18,000 for the Healthy Lake Boone Initiative. We combined those together rather than trying to run two competing fundraising campaigns. And we felt like there was some logic in tying them together. That fundraising campaign has been going very well. I would say, I think at this point, we are confident that we will reach the goal. As of today, we have raised approximately 132,000. We have sources identified for some of the additional funds, so we are a very large part of the way there. And I think significantly making that up are contributions from more than 150 people, residents around the lake, second homeowners, residents far beyond the lake, local businesses, and others. I think there is an awful lot of excitement about this project. So those are the three elements of the fundraising package and kind of the sense of where they stand right now. I'm happy to go into any more of that detail on those during the question and the answers. In terms of the proposed plan for the property, the plan is to have the Conservation Commission acquire the property for open space and for passive recreation. We have envisioned a series of loop trails on the property that would lead from two existing parking lots. One of them is here, almost directly across from Hallock Point Road. It's for the Marlborough Sudbury State Forest. And the other existing parking area is kind of right here at the Lake Boone boat ramp. There is already some of this trail in place, and we will be putting the remainder of it in place after the closing. The plan is to have kind of a small picnic area at the tip of the point that would offer opportunities for picnicking and enjoying the panoramic view of the lake from the point. And there would also be kind of a small boat pull-up area on the tip of the point where people that are out boating on the lake could pull up a kayak or canoe and enjoy the, the view from the point and step off there. This is just kind of a view from the tip of Hallock Point. This is the top of the hill out on the point where you do that, get that wonderful view out over the lake. And this is on the left, the area that would be that boat pull-up area at the tip of the point. And then one of the really exciting things about this project for me is the potential for linkage between Hallock Point and the huge network of trails that exists at the Asper River National Wildlife Refuge and the Marlborough Sudbury State Forest. So this is taken from the Marlborough Sudbury State Forest parking lot, the trail that heads off into the wildlife refuge. And then if you look at this map, you can kind of see that large network of trails that really winds their way through the wildlife refuge and bring you all the way to Sudbury Road across from Hallock Point. So you can imagine a visitor could park, you know, all the way up at White Pond Road and hike through the refuge with Hallock Point as their destination, and then take an entirely different route back to their car. Or somebody who's cycling out on the Asper River Rail Trail could make their way down and enjoy Hallock Point, which is a great opportunity that we don't have today. And so in closing, I guess I wanted to say that I think one of the great things that's come out of this partnership is really a terrific partnership among all of the entities shown here, the Conservation Commission, the Lake Boone Commission, and association, Stowe Conservation Trust, which has played a key role in the fundraising, the Community Preservation Committee, Open Space Committee, and all of the residents that have been involved in this project. And I think there's been some really wonderful community building as we have all worked together over many months of weekly meetings and going door to door, some of the residents in the neighborhoods raising funds for this project. So the next step would be your vote tonight and then town meeting on May 22nd. We are asking you to vote to exercise your right of first refusal contingent on the town meeting vote on May 22nd. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and then to Dave.
Thanks, Kathy. I will pick up from where Kathy started. I'll be brief. I know we want to move on to public discussion with this. The, I want to make two key points. The first is the power of community access to the lake. We all know that Lake Boone is a wonderful asset of the Town of Stowe and of Hudson. But the access points are relatively limited. There's the town beach, there's the launch ramp. But Hallock Point becomes a new place for other residents of Stowe to have access and, and, you know, in Hudson, to have access to, to the lake. The second point is a pretty serious point about, concerns about the health of the lake. You may recall last year that the, we had to close the lake because of possible cyanobacteria, algae blooms. We've seen actually a, an increasing risk to this, to the lake. Now, in recognition of this, I should say, I'm one of the three members of the Lake Boone Commission. With this availability, this land came up. The Lake Boone Commission took a very close look at it and said, this is the last remaining piece of pristine land that we can acquire at an incredibly inexpensive cost, given the value of all this land, that would help sustain the health of the lake. It also ties in closely with another initiative we have going on, what we call the Healthy Lake Boone Initiative, funded with a $154,000 grant from the state in which Citizen Science are doing extensive monitoring of the lake. We had our first volunteers doing that measurement, those measurements last, two weekends ago, to help us understand the true complex dynamics of the lake. So over the long haul, over the decades to come, we can sustain the health of the lake. So between those two things, the Hallock Point initiative is a crucial piece of the puzzle. So last night, the Lake Boone Commission restated its support. And I'll just read the statement that we approved. "The LBC strongly supports Stowe acquiring the Hallock Point property and its preservation for the health and safety of the lake and community, and for public access and use. The proposed acquisition aligns well with the Healthy Lake Boone Initiative and has already garnered supportive funding of over 150 local residents. Lake Boone is a small and shallow lake, and as such, is more vulnerable to the effects of overdevelopment, both on the health of the lake and surrounding watershed areas, and to safe recreational use of the waters. Loss of undeveloped land could have a significant negative ramification in both of these areas as natural vegetation and buffers are eliminated." So I guess in closing, I just want to say how pleased and impressed I've been with the breadth of support. As Dave Gray will say in a moment, the 150 individuals who have donated from $100 to even $10,000, this contribution shows the breadth of support for this, for this initiative. So I'll turn this now over to Dave Gray.
Thanks, Dan. I'm David Gray at 12 Pine Point Road. And speaking for the Lake Boone Association, as its treasurer and managing some of the fundraising going on here, it's been quite a rewarding experience to see the support in people making contributions, as Dan says, of all amounts here. And in fact, the amazing thing is, we have more people contributing to this cause than we get in memberships during the normal Lake Boone Association calendar year. So it, the interest is strong, and they're contributing a lot more than they would pay in dues. So it has been the residents of the lake, the residents in the community, the Stowe Conservation Trust has put in quite a bit as well. And we've had sources of, of grants that, from different organizations that have also chipped in here. So as I say, it's been quite rewarding, and it's great to see this broad community support. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board at this point? Questions or comments?
I have just a couple of questions, not comments at this point, but. So the, the boat access isn't to bring a boat to the point? You can only access it from the point, I, from the pond, is that right? Or from the lake?
That's correct. We actually had some fairly lengthy discussions about whether or not to have a boat access from land into the lake there. And we decided against it for a couple of reasons. One, the existing boat ramp is just a stone's throw away from that spot. And two, we didn't feel that this was a great location to put a parking lot because it would be quite secluded. And, you know, people who launch boats then want to leave their car behind. So it is, there is ample opportunity to launch a boat immediately adjacent, and this would just be for, you know, walking, picnicking, that kind of use.
And I, I just can't, couldn't tell from your map, is the, the road is accessible to? I mean, could you potentially, like, drive down and drop someone off?
You could, yeah. I mean, it's a gravel road.
Okay.
Goes not all the way to the tip of the point, but, you know, close enough that somebody could walk there.
Yep. A very technical question. I'm just puzzled by something. In our correspondence this week. In our correspondence this week, there is a copy of the notice of intent, but it's dated June 3rd, 2019. I see references in it though to 2020. May I assume that nine, that, uh, 2019 is just a typographical error?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Leave it to the.
And one that I've made, so I.
Thanks for pointing it out, Jim.
A period discrepancy I thought deserved a que- a question, but, you know, that's, thank you.
Okay, Megan?
Um, I had a quick, there's, if I remember correctly, there are three houses on Halle Point Road, right? Like currently, there are already three houses there?
There are three houses on Halle Point.
Okay.
I believe two of them are year-round houses and one of them is a seasonal cottage.
Okay. I think that's another argument to not put a parking lot down there. You know, just so that the, the current, you know, homeowners wouldn't, but I really, um, yeah, that was my only question.
Okay.
Yeah, I will just add, you know, we have extensive experience managing parking lots and parking lots work best when they are on main roads and people can drive by and observe what's happening in them.
All right.
Great.
I'll open this up to the general public. If you can raise your virtual hand. Um, we will let you be recognized and please state your name and address and, uh, we can go from there.
Let me see Bill.
I'm not seeing anybody to tell.
Bill, Bill has got his hand up. Bill and Jill.
All right, I'm not, all right, um. Bill, you said Bill and Jill?
Bill, Joe, and then Joe Callan Drilly.
All right.
But Bill seems to be ready. He took himself off mute already. Yep.
All right. Let's, let's go with Bill.
It's, it's Bill Maxley, you know, on the street. I still haven't figured, you know, taken the time to change my name to, to, to tell the, the, the second part of my story, Max. Um, and, uh, I, I am, uh, the, uh, current chairman of the Open Space Committee. And the Open Space Committee's, uh, mission really was started with the idea of trying to, uh, anticipate and, uh, evaluate land that is, uh, currently under Chapter 61 and to try to help with a hundred and twenty day limit. I think this process points out that the hundred and twenty days is tight. And the idea that we've had this much time because of the pandemic has allowed for some really, uh, excellent coordination and fundraising to justify even doing it. If this came up in a hundred and twenty days and people said, "Can we raise, uh, you know, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in a hundred and twenty days to go into a special town meeting?" Which we're not going to have to pay for, by the way. Uh, and, uh, and it, 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 it's, it's very nice to have this extra time. Uh, and I think that it, it also is, um, bears out with the effort that's taking place, uh, with Stowe Acres. Okay, stay under the two minutes. Our Open Space, uh, Committee has been talking about it for quite a while. And we were the ones who wanted to make sure that, uh, if we could possibly sell two lots to raise a hunk of money, which is, uh, looks like it, it is happening. Uh, but we were also very, um, uh, uh, we, we were trying to make sure that there was a buffer zone, uh, so that as you drive along Sudbury Road, you will not necessarily see those houses, you know, right next door. Uh, which I think, uh, the development right next door at the Dawes property, um, that, that buffer zone really does work. Okay, and so, uh, with that, we had a meeting last night in anticipation of this, uh, selectmen's meeting. And, uh, we, I was sent here to tell you that we urge you to support that the, um, the Board of Selectmen to exercise the right of first refusal and endorse the warrant article for acquiring Halle Point.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have any?
Joe Calland Drilly was the other person that had his hand up. Do you see?
I'm not.
White shirt, there he is.
Right there.
Thank you. Uh, uh, my name is Joe Calland Drilly. Uh, I am an attorney for Saji Johnson, who is the homeowner of 25 Halle Point Road, which is that one property on the north side of the map that is kind of sandwiched in between where some of these, uh, walking trails are slated to go. Uh, the reason I'm, uh, here tonight is, uh, because, uh, while Mr. Sa- while Mr. Johnson, uh, supports, uh, this, this project and is purchased by the town, um, I, we did want to alert the town to, uh, Mr. Saji, Mr. Johnson, uh, claim that he believes he is the rightful owner to a very, very small and narrow strip of the land that, uh, abuts his property, uh, but that is included in this 12.6 acre parcel that is, uh, under consideration for the town right now. Um, I, I submitted a letter to the town, uh, just a few days ago. Uh, I don't know if the board has had a chance yet to review that letter. Uh, and I am looking for discussion, uh, about it, um, or any questions. Uh, but basically, uh, the, the gist, uh, is that there is a strip of land, um, about fifteen feet wide or so uh, that houses, uh, the shed that belongs to that house. That shed has been, has been present there for at least 21 years, uh, as far as we can tell. And based on conversations with prior property owners, it's been maintained exclusively by the homeowners of 25 Halle Point Road. Uh, it has been maintained in such a way that, uh, we believe that it has been acquired by right of adverse possession by Mr. Johnson and his predecessors, uh, in interest. Um, so I, I did just want to take a few minutes today to, uh, inform, uh, this hearing tonight of that claim and to invite any questions that the board may have on that. Thank you.
Tom, could I?
Jim?
Would you like me to respond or do you want to respond?
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, we're aware of the letter. Um, and there won't be any discussion of that letter tonight. Be, other than, um, we acknowledge that we've received it. And, um, anything that we would discuss about that would be done in executive session. And at the same time, I believe that there are on, ongoing negotiations. And so, um, thank you for the input.
Understood. I just invite, uh, town council, uh, to reach out to me on this subject. Thank you very much.
I saw somebody else. Bill, I think you've still got your virtual hand up.
Bob Wilber has his hand up.
Yeah, there was somebody else.
I did turn the hand off.
Same way you put it on.
I'm on it.
Bob. All right. Obviously, I'm not seeing everything here, but.
We're a year into the pandemic, Bill, come on.
Bob Wilber's on his.
All right. Bob Wilber has his actual hand up.
Bob, if you have your actual hand up that I can't see, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bob Wilber, Red Acre Road, uh, President of the Stowe Conservation Trust. I just want to relay, one of the reasons the Stowe Conservation Trust was, uh, so willing to team up with the Lake Boone Association and the Lake Boone, uh, Commission to, uh, raise the funds, um, uh, with the town on this is, it's really a terrific op- opportunity. Uh, Lake Boone is, is part of what makes Stowe Stowe. And, and this particular property is, uh, special in a couple of regards. It's, it's an opportunity to, uh, help the health of the lake, as been mentioned. Uh, it will enhance, um, uh, property values on the lake. Uh, and it will also importantly, provide opportunities for non-lake residents in our town to be able to experience the lake in a really, really pleasant way. Uh, and then the, the trail connections are just good fortune. Uh, really great, you know, to be able to have a parking lot right on the other side of the road to access the federal property and the state property that already have trails on them, uh, linking to it. That, that's really fantastic. Last point I would make is it's, it's really a terrific value for the town. Uh, when the prospective developer negotiated the purchase, uh, he did so at very, uh, good value. And, uh, that property has appreciated significantly in the time since. And I would put a conservative estimate that the current market value of that property is at least $2 million. And so for the town to be able to protect it for, uh, $400,000 of, of community preservation funding is, is an excellent leverage of those funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, Marcia?
Yeah, I just have a, a question about this 15-foot strip of land. Is, was it just an oversight in, uh, surveying? Or it, and are the assessors actually, um, is the man paying taxes on that parcel? Is it part, considered part of his land?
Right now, right now, Marcia, uh, we just recently got this information. Um, I think Kathy might have more information on that, but I'd really rather not be discussing, um, that be, you know, a 15-foot parcel at this point. Um, it's, uh, you know, it's, when, when, when the lawyers have started to get involved, I, I back down.
Okay.
So, uh.
I, I'll, if I could just add, um, we just received the letter yesterday. Um, town council and I are discussing it. This also involves the council for the seller, um, because they are the current owners of the property. So there need to be some, I think, three-way conversations here. Um, the shed is just over the property line, so I suspect it was just built on the wrong side of it. Um, and the current owner is paying taxes on it, is any by each shed. But beyond that, I think it, I, I don't think that there's anything about it that should affect the vote tonight. Um, and that's town council's opinion, so it's something that we can discuss between now and town meeting.
All right. Uh, Marcia, if you could take your virtual hand down. And I think, I see Ven Antle is there. Ven?
Hi, uh, Ven Antle, term of the Community Preservation Committee. Um, I just wanted to, as you probably know, we endorsed this, uh, this warrant article and it was a unanimous, uh, vote. And we were very excited by the, uh, multi-faceted fundraising. You've got some private fundraising, you've got some, some, uh, funds coming from land sale. It's, uh, uh, it's, uh, good to see that kind of coordination. So, thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Do we have any other folks that would like to, uh, comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, uh, do we have any other questions or comments from members of the board?
I would, uh, echo what's been said already. I think this is an excellent value and, uh, it just seems to, to make sense. A lot of folks are behind this and have put a lot of effort into it. And it's also a, uh, like a wild place. Uh, I'd like to speak for the wild places and the little critters that don't have voices in select board meetings.
Jim, Megan?
Regardless of the merits of the project, which I actually think are very good, I think our vote tonight is a very simple one, which is essentially to move it along to town meeting. Um, the vote that we have on accepting the, um, exercising the right of first refusal is obviously contingent on town meeting. I can't imagine depriving town meeting of the opportunity to hear these arguments and exercise its discretion. So I certainly am in favor of a yes vote on what we're gonna, on what we're here to do tonight. And I will say for the record, I, I like the project, but on what we're here to do tonight, I, I think, I can't imagine taking the decision away from town meeting.
Megan? No, it's.
Um, I don't have anything else to say that hasn't been said. I was involved with the planning board in the initial subdivision development of what was going to happen. Um, and I will say that I personally was excited to see, um, to see it come up as the town being able to, um, exercise its right of first refusal. I like the fact that there are a couple of houses that are going in. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I do think that it is a very well-thought-out plan. Um, and I appreciate all the work that everyone's done on that. Um, and, yeah, I think that the longer we've lived here, the, the more I've, um, gotten excited about the different trails and the different opportunities. And I do feel like this ties in nicely. Um, so yeah, that's, that's all I have to say now.
Ellen?
Um, well, um, I am, I am in support of, act, you know, acting on the right of first refusal. I'm, I'm not going to be in support of the project. Um, I think it's an amazing partnership. Um, but I went through the open space report, the last one they did, and this parcel didn't show up. And I feel like we have such demands on our CPA funds and such demands on our land. And I'm just, I, I'm, I'm overwhelmed and impressed as heck with how, the fundraising, but I, I don't feel like, um, I, I, you know, we, the reason we have these, these lists created where we ask people to, to prioritize the needs of the town is that's what we use to guide us and we're not, in this case, we didn't use it. Um, generally, it says Lake Boone access. This is actually, isn't the same kind of access that the, the open space report refers to. It talked about boat access. The boat landing that we have now is pretty awful because it's, it's where there's no water movement. So it's very hard if you've ever tried to get a boat through there. It's, it's sort of, you know, a mess. And I, so I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that we're not following, you know, the reason we do these studies is so we, we prioritize things. You know, we've got Stowe Acres coming up. And to me, that's something we've been talking about for decades. Like, we could lose the golf courses and then we, you know, what, what the risk is. That's where it's a priority to the town. This isn't to me a priority. Um, you know, we're losing tax revenue from, you know, taxable lots. If, if the houses were being built, we have rules about septic. I mean, the problem with Lake Boone is that we had a lot of summer cottages that didn't have appropriate septic and it's caused real problems on the lake. And I don't, I don't minimize that, but, you know, these lots weren't, aren't going to be the solution to Lake Boone. So, um, but that said, I'm still supporting, you know, taking it to town meeting 'cause, 'cause there's too many people who've worked on this too hard. But I'm really concerned about how this town makes priorities and then ignores them.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Sure.
Um, I was on the Conservation Commission at the time that this project came through for the, the development. And one of the real challenges for the commission was that, um, several of these house lots would be probably quite expensive lots that would, um, carry a large home with a, an amazing view. And those, whoever wanted to develop those particular sites was going to want to open the view up and they were going to want to have access to the lake. And the access from those points is kind of, it's not straightforward and it would completely, um, destroy the 35-foot noticed earth buffer that we have. And so there was a real conflict of interest in development versus, um, holding our, our buffer, um, unviolated, which is, which is honestly a very difficult thing to do. 35 feet isn't even a lot. And, um, and yet often, you know, it's, it, it is, um, it's hard to hold the line with a person who's putting a house on a lake and say, "Well, you can't walk down to the lake and you can't have a dock and you can't, um, clear a view." And, um, it, it certainly arose that it was going to be a regular occurrence that new owners of the property or existing owners were going to come and ask for, uh, some kind of variance or some kind of clemency on this, on the Wetlands Protection Act. And, um, that alone, I think, would be, um, a substantial amount of work for the Conservation Commission. Not that it's not their regular work. And, uh, I think even setting, citing the houses, um, you know, we had a lot of conversations with the developer over how to pull things back. over how to pull things back away from where you wanna put a house, 'cause you wanna have this incredible view. So um, it's another reason that uh, I think it's it's great to conserve this. I I agree with you that we have a lot of competition for our CPA funds and other resources right now. But I don't, I don't believe that developing that would have been an asset to the town.
No, I I, you know, I I agree that, you know, I definitely wouldn't want to deprive town meeting of the ability to vote on this. Um, I actually support the project and right now I think our job here is just to move forward with the right of first refusal and we can have further debates about it later on. But uh, and I think we're in agreement, so it is probably gonna go fairly quick. So at that point, uh, there being no more comments, um, I'm gonna close this public hearing. I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the public hearing for the chapter sixty-one A property at Hallack Point Road be closed.
Second. Roll call vote. Ellen? Courtney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. The next point of business really is to exercise our right of first refusal on this. And I think we've probably already said everything that we need to say, so I'm happy to accept our motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen exercise its statutory right of first refusal pursuant to chapter sixty-one, section eight, purchase that land located off Sudbury Road on Hallack Point Road in the town of Stowe, Massachusetts, shown as lots one through seven, Hallack Point Road and parcel X, on a plan of land entitled definitive plan quote Hallacks Point close quote Hallacks Point Road, Stowe, Massachusetts, prepared for Robert Dawes LLC dated September seventeen, twenty eighteen, revised through July thirtieth, twenty nineteen, prepared by Meisner Brem Corporation. Recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds as Plan eight oh two of twenty nineteen and being a portion of those premises described in the deed recorded with said registry in book seven oh five nine zero, page three hundred, owned by Robert Dawes LLC and authorized the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to execute any and all documents necessary or convenient in connection with the acquisition of said property, including but not limited to a notice of exercise and purchase and sale agreement, provided however, that this vote is contingent upon the approval of the purchase of this property at the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And so Kathy, Bob, Dan, Dave, Ven, you've got it. And you guys have done a great job. I'm very impressed with the coordination that you guys have put forward. And congratulations on a job well done.
Two two comments. One, I've never seen a forum go that fast. Number two, uh, the original uh, property that we looked at at the very beginning was the Dawes property, which is, which is the same owner. And they did not put this part of Hallack Point up for sale when they did the development. And it was our opinion that even though it was close to the lake and everything else, it was not appropriate to town protect the Dawes property. And so I think it worked. What was left over is, you know, twelve acres and I I think that we probably should have gone back and looked at it closer. But um, so we made a decision about the Dawes property and it was appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support, Selectmen.
Tom, I hate to be a nudge, but I think you need to take a roll call vote.
Need a roll call vote? I'll, I'm happy to do that.
Just to be.
Just to be. Ellen?
Yes.
Courtney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
We voted twice now, so it's twice as good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you all for your presentations.
Okay. And we're even ahead of ourselves because we are, we've done the perambulation. Review and approve that town warrant. Um, I assume everybody wants to go through this page by page?
Yep, line by line.
Line by line?
So I I do have a process question. Are we, we're not voting on our positions on it, on articles. We're just reviewing it for language saying about where something might be located.
And and actually, actually, language and things like that, we're probably not even doing that. That's Denise and Joyce have been.
Right.
You know, it's it's the structure, um, the, it isn't complete. I think Denise even put in that uh, there were probably gonna be some minor tweaks from council.
There's a couple of small errors.
This is mostly for the form and function. Um, I've re, I looked through it. I didn't see anything that uh, um, jumped out at me. Ninety percent of it is the same stuff year after year. And uh.
So so I'm I'm a little confused then what we're.
Well, this is a ministerial task more than anything else, I believe. Would you agree, Jim?
Theoretically. What we're, what we're doing is we're making sure that there's nothing here that's illegal, duplicative, um, that kind of thing. And yeah, um, you know, two articles that are in conflict with each other, things like that. We do technically, I think, have more discretionary power. Actually, I think by the charter, we can't refuse an a warrant article proposed by a town board. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's what it says. But in theory, we're reviewing it to make sure it's not illegal, duplicative, contrary to something that happened last year, but it doesn't say that that kind of thing. Even that functioned though, since we've had a town administrator and a town council, has largely been delegated.
Yeah, I would think it would be only if we wanted to move around, like if there was something that we thought should be earlier in the warrant.
That too.
I, yeah.
But no, this isn't, at least my understanding, this isn't on uh, our positions on stuff.
No.
I thought we were gonna talk about that over the next two meetings, right? That was my understanding.
That that, yeah, yeah, that will be it. Next week and if we have, or not, two weeks from now and then if we have to go on, we'll do another meeting just before town.
Yeah, I I have to say, um, the changes that have been made about putting the balance of the account as of the, on these specific items on the consent calendar is tremendous.
Yeah.
As far as transparency goes, I am over the moon seeing this. So, um, yeah, I, kudos to whoever decided to put that in there, 'cause I absolutely love it.
That would be Denise.
That would be probably Denise.
Denise, yeah, yeah.
I think when you combine that with the elimination of the EIP.
Yep.
With the Collings Report adjustments. We've come a long way toward my, toward making it not just transparent, but substantively um, equitable, is that the right word?
No, equitable.
What word did you use?
Equitable.
Equitable, equitable, rational.
Honest, yeah, no.
What was that?
I said honest, you know. I mean, it's, it transparent though, it, it made it's, yeah.
But.
Okay.
I I ended up going through it, you know, nothing jumped out at me. You know, I could read some of the the zoning stuff all day long.
I'm still not.
And I still wouldn't understand all of it. So, uh, unless we wanna get into, uh, we could discuss a few of the zoning articles if we wanna torch them.
Actually, when I read of that, I thought it was lovely. I'm so delighted with the amendments to the AAN. It is awesome.
It is. Yep, yep.
Really great work by the planning board. That is not a small thing, so.
It's really, it's. It's really thoughtful.
So.
Yeah.
So, should we discuss?
Does anybody, anybody have anything substantive that they feel needs to be changed, beaten up or anything like that?
I wanted to beat something up.
Go for it.
Um, I'm I'm finding it, um.
I have a paper version.
No, so on, um, so this is funny. Electronically, it says page fifty-one, but when I went to print it out, it was page fifty-two. This is, um, I have to go back a little. It is article eighteen, I think. Hang on. It says several pages before. Um, and so this is the um, don't dump anything icky in the stormwater article. No, sorry, it's article fifty-five.
No, that's, it's.
It's not new general bylaw governing discharges to municipal stormwater, storm drain system. So there's just a little schedule of um, fines that is, got a kind of a typo in it, so, money.
Where are you? 'Cause I have article eighteen as a Stowe TV experience.
No, 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 it's not. I, I was, I was incorrect, so it's.
No, it's article fifty-five, actually.
It's forty-six on the packet.
So it's.
So it's.
Is that what you said?
It's article fifty-five and it's page fifty-one.
Thank you.
But it says article eighteen on page forty-five. That's what, that's where you saw it, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, that's what it is, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so page fifty-one, near the bottom, where uh, third paragraph, basically from the bottom, non-criminal disposition.
References difference.
Oh, 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 oh.
So, um, middle to end of that, so basically this says, um, the penant penalty, first violation's a hundred, second violation two hundred, third violation three hundred, and then the penalty for the third and subsequent violation shall be four hundred. So I question the people who wrote this and just double check your language and see if that's the fourth and subsequent violations or just double check it.
Right, you're absolutely correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yep.
It should be the, yep.
There's a three hundred and.
It should be what they mean, not what it says.
It should be the first, right?
Three hundred and a four hundred dollar for the third violation.
We really get whacked. There you go.
And of course, what I s, kinda scratched my head at is you probably wanna go with the criminal penalty because it's only a hundred dollars a day instead of four hundred for the fourth.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm uh, yeah.
But. Uh, I I bet you Joyce will be bringing that to Denise's attention or it will be, already be fixed by the time Denise comes back.
Might be. Does that article belong to the highway department? It's a planning board, so.
And highway?
Yeah.
Or planner, I'm sorry.
So.
That was the only thing I could find to beat up.
Pretty good.
Yeah, it's good.
Right, in that case, um, I think we have a statutory authority that we need to approve the warrant substantially so that it can be uh, fine tuned and then uh, go to print.
Well, I'm ready to second that motion.
Uh, I I move to accept the warrant for the May twenty-two, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, pending legal edits by town council that may change the wording, but not the intent of the articles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I finally found what you're talking about.
Sorry.
No, I'm really the caboose on that one and I get what you're saying, yeah, that's pretty hilarious.
Um, so, I think.
We got somewhere, oh.
Our town administrator's report.
Town officials, of course.
I had that.
You got me nervous for a second. You picked up that big stack of paper.
Oh, no.
I know. And all I gotta do is find it again.
It's in the packet too.
I.
Yeah, with the packet.
Oh, that's.
That's what I'm looking for, that piece.
Other.
You mentioned.
And the town administrator's report. Obviously provided by our town administrator, just to be read by me. As previously mentioned, the the town partnered with Marlboro Hospital to provide COVID vaccine to our residents. Appointments are added daily, so anyone who wishes to make an appointment should visit our website or our Facebook page and follow the links to schedule an appointment. Uh, the town is holding a rabies clinic on Thursday, May sixth, from six P M. to eight P M. at the Highway Yard, eighty-eight South Acton Road. Please visit the website for further information. And the Stowe Recreation and Conservation Departments are soliciting applications from area artists to install work for uh, outdoor art at the Town Center Park Arrival Area just off Great Road in Stowe Center at three twenty-three Great Road. Applications are due June first, with the winner being selected by July first, with installation unveiling planned for the fall. The artist and the selected art piece will be awarded a five hundred dollar prize, made possible by a grant from the Stowe Cultural Council. Visit our website for application and more information. Alright. That was short. You should go on vacation, Laura. Um, liaison reports. Megan, start with you tonight.
I have nothing new to report. Um, but no.
Don't make up something.
Not that we haven't already discussed, so no.
Alright, Jim?
Real brief, um, FinCon held its public hearing last week, but and went through the warrant in detail. Oh, Stowe TV, Lake Act, um, is entering its contract negotiations for holding a strategy session tomorrow night. And then I just wanna alert you that, I can't say much about this, but there is the possibility of a very new and exciting funding source for Track Road. Jesse and Denise are working on it. I hope that we can say more, that they can say more at our next meeting on it, but there is possibility of some really good news there.
Courtney?
I don't have a lot to report. I attended the open space meeting last night. I think that their participation in the presentation earlier wrapped most of that up. They did, um, you know, talk also about the Stowe Acres project, which is advancing, um. That's, I think that's all I've got to say.
Ellen?
Uh, so sort of through um, the M A P C um, information flow that seems to be endless. A couple interesting, well, so just today, I guess the state announced the reopening May tenth, so I was gonna ask Denise what our plans are for town buildings, but that'll be a discussion for future. Um, so, but I think that's good news. Interesting, um, D H C D, which is sort of related to S M O T, even though I'm not the S M O T liaison, but you know, I tend to hear this stuff. But also it came through M A P C. I don't know why. That there, as of May fifteenth, they're gonna be strongly um, encouraging slash requiring that a a resident of affordable housing be on a Stowe Housing Authority, or a housing authority if a town has one. We have a very inactive housing authority. It hasn't met for several years, but I think it's a great idea. So, um, we can, will be, we should raise up the, maybe have the Stowe Housing Authority members come to a meeting in the future to see if they would like to have a meeting. So, um, and there was something else on um, M A P C, but now I'm forgetting what it was. I didn't write it down, so. That's, that's all.
And uh, I'll keep it brief. I just finished up my ten-week course with the um, Stowe Civilian Police Academy. And I strongly suggest my colleagues do that. I think Jim's done it before. But it's uh, you know, it it puts things in a different perspective on certain things. And, you know, especially when you get into some of the role playing. You know, the uh, the chief ended up putting together a very good program. John Butler, who's one of the dispatchers, he's also the um, use of force instructor. Detective Cassandra Scott, now, I keep thinking of her as Ella. But Detective Scott did a fabulous job with a lot of it. But everybody who participated fro, from the police department did a fabulous job. And um, you know, even though I've known most of these guys for years, it's uh, I saw a new side of them. And uh, uh, Officer Gazago, I definitely don't wanna run into you in the wrong place. But.
Yeah, I'm I'm really looking forward to to doing that. I've already, you know, decided listening to to both of you. And uh, um, spare a spare a, that'd be fun to do.
So, it's uh, it was, it was a very good experience for me. I I enjoyed it thoroughly. And now that we've done that, now we can finish up the meeting minutes. We have, the next one up is.
Did you go to twenty eighteen once? I think that's.
I already did.
November thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
I just didn't check it off. Uh, we have November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, executive session minutes. On this one, um, where this does mention a personnel matter, Jim, should we not be releasing this? I think it, uh, it has a, um, because it dealt with workers' comp.
I think I would err on the side of not. It even mentions the name, so I would say no.
Yeah.
Not not, but, uh, I think you and I were the only ones that were actually at this meeting.
Yep.
So it's, uh, I think it looks fine to me to re- to approve, but just not release because it deals with personnel.
So I think one of you has, at least one of you has to vote to make it legal to.
I'll vote to to make it legal.
I move to approve, but not release, the executive session minutes of November thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain just 'cause I was not there.
Well, there's there's gonna be another one that I was the only one there. Believe it or not.
I have no problem with that.
So that was November eighteen or November thirteenth. Now we have, uh, July tenth, two thousand eighteen, executive session minutes. This was basically, um, talking about, uh, it wa- it was, uh, contract negotiations. I think this one's okay to both approve and release. And Jim was absent, so I'm the only one who was actually there at this point.
Well, I'll vote.
But, uh, I would say it's okay to approve and release. So I'll accept a motion.
Looks like it's just about union stuff.
Yeah. That was, uh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and release the executive session minutes of July ten, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Still abstaining, sorry.
That's okay.
As long as you're sorry, that's what matters.
Yeah. As long as I apologize with every abstention, right?
So instead of, uh, in- instead of saying, just asking if you were staying, I should just say, do you apologize?
Do I apologize? Yeah. Oh, goodness.
All right. And the last one is, uh, open session minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. And they looked fine to me. Now, let's see, and. Jim was absent at this one also.
You know, I was trying to remember if I was geeking out, watching any of this on T V, but it didn't look like it. It didn't it didn't really look familiar.
I I didn't have any issue with anything that was in there, so, uh, I'm happy to accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the, uh, meeting of April ten, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you sorry again?
Nope.
You're not sorry?
This time I'm not, but I am gonna abstain.
At least we go that clear.
All right. I'm sorry if I picked on. Well within your rights. Last up is correspond.
And I did it in the in the kindest of of. Way meant.
Last correspondence. I saw that we had a petition from Gleesendale Mill Area. I'm assuming that Denise will tell us what to do with that when she comes back. And we've also been invited to the Brookside Cemetery on Memorial Day at nine A M. And those.
But do we know, is this supposed to be a limited crowd kind of thing? Do I don't I was I'm delighted to see that something's gonna happen. I was wondering if we were gonna find somebody to do it. I'm just wondering.
Last year, figure I I ended up going just to to represent the Selectmen.
Right.
It was very small. I suspect that by the end of May, we'll, you know, or mid-May, we will probably know more. And, you know, it's, I'm guessing it will still have to be a small ceremony. This, there was no parade mentioned, things like that. But maybe, you know, it it may be able to be opened up a little bit more, but I think we're just gonna have to listen to the health authorities at the time.
Well, that's I was just wondering, right? I mean, given the the change that's happening, that masks are no longer required outdoors in Massachusetts, so.
Right. So those are the.
How does that official? That mask are no longer.
As of today.
As of this today. Well, hold on. There's like, it's like if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask outside if you can safely socially distance. But if you are not vaccinated, you're still expected to wear a mask outside and you're still expected to wear a mask. Sorry, I apparently watched all of this this afternoon, so. Um, and then you have to wear a mask if you are, um, if you're unable to socially distance, even if you are fully vaccinated.
I'll check it out. I'm I'm just concerned about when I ride my bike. I'm tired of.
Right.
No, I thi- I think it's, yeah, it.
You know, it, I I can say without a doubt, if I was riding on the subway, I would probably be wearing a mask.
Yes, inside, definitely, inside, right.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Regardless, so.
Yep.
Yep.
You don't wanna go crazy.
Um, you know, those were the only two that were, uh, loose here that I saw.
Yep.
So other than that, um.
Sorry.
Wow.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Does anybody else have anything else, uh, they wanna bring up? Or do you just, I'll, if not, I will, uh, accept a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You all.